All right. Good evening, Council. We called the September nineteenth, twenty twenty four, City Council Meeting to order. And Suzanne, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Case.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Gier.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, we're on item three ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and we have item A, which is a progress update on our new reservoir from our Utilities Director, Kip Wiley.
Come in just one second. Trying to get the presentation loaded.
We have a technical difficulty. Please stand by. Yeah.
See if Eric was here, if he could hold that on.
Looks like we're in business. Kip, welcome.
Thank you. Quick update on the reservoir. As soon as I'm loading this presentation here, I'm gonna share my screen.
Yay.
Is it there? It's on my screen.
You're good.
All right, um, quick update, uh, some new news and some more information that will be coming your way. So we thought it'd be pertinent to update you all on this. So just a quick, uh, to orient yourself, um, you see in the upper left-hand corner, the round circular thing, that's the main tank. That's the water treatment plant. Uh, so that's Rampart Range Road going from left to right. So going north, if you would traverse from, uh, I'll say the south of this pitcher, but to the east, um, the area right in here is the Boy Scout camp is where this is going. Next slide is, uh, just a zoom in of that. You can see the, the, the camp on the bottom of the screen and where the proposed reservoir is going to go. A little bit more detail from that. Um, just the topo and what it actually will look like when constructed with some elevations. So what have we been working on? Um, we've been working on access points. Uh, I just bring this up because this is the proposed road that would go into the reservoir. The Boy Scout camp is directly straight up in the middle of that. Uh, so, um, about a quarter mile before the camp, the road would start in Bear Off to the south through that reservoir. Um, so what have we been doing? Um, we have, uh, contacted an engineer and a geotech company to figure out what needs to be done to design this thing. Um, with that geotech investigation, um, in that data of setting up the plan, what we came across was site access issues. Uh, the current, uh, bridge or culvert that is there is an old rock culvert. Um, it cannot handle the, the loads of the drilling equipment. Uh, so we have looked at a couple of different options, uh, to enter the site. Uh, the problem with that is the floodway and the timing and the permitting that comes along with that. Also, what we have done is had discussions with the regulatory agencies, being state, um, Paso County, um, for what needs to be done, uh, in regards to the dam. And then also, uh, we've spent some money on developing the scope of work, uh, for this. Uh, so I have a pretty lengthy document that we're have, that we've, uh, prepared to put out for bid for the design, for the scope, just the design. Okay? So we, we've moved forward with that, and then the preliminary options and cost estimates as it relates to the site access options. With that, uh, we have come up with a secondary access site, um, that I'm gonna show you in a minute and where that exists. So that's different than the first one I showed you. The reasoning for that is to get the equipment on site quicker, uh, so we can then get the preliminary geotech work done and not have to wait for that entire road to be built. Um, we've also discussed this with the Boy Scouts. Um, and, uh, we also looked at the, the primary access and starting that process and getting that ball rolling because I'm told that's gonna be about a twelve to an eighteen month process, um, to get that rolling. Uh, so we've also developed a proposal for those options. Um, those three options are, one, putting in a temporary access or a secondary access site and what that includes, and if we have to remove that. Two being utilizing that access point, um, and making it permanent in the future and discussing that with the Boy Scouts. And the third, starting the preliminary, the primary access point. This slide here is showing the secondary access point that we would like to make permanent, uh, per the Boy Scouts and discussions with them. Um, you can see, um, highlighted in red, um, is where we do the creek crossing. Also, in the same location, there are utilities that will be installed to bring water to the reservoir. So we have a pipeline that runs down there now that we will be connecting to and bringing water up to the reservoir with the addition of a pump station and a small treatment facility. Um, this is no, this is the, the old news, I should say. Um, it just so happens that's the best access to the site to get on it sooner rather than later. Um, here's just kind of the, the utilities I was talking about, highlights, uh, where certain things are, um, where the secondary access is, what other utilities and geotech work needs to be done in that, in those locations as well. Um, this is just a, uh, quick blow up of the proposed geotech work that needs to be done, uh, for the subsurface of the dam itself. Uh, you can see the, the, the dots in purple and blue, um, and green are where they're proposing to take those, uh, those samples. So we know what to design the dam to. Um, and then lastly, I just put this in here. This is a letter from the Scouts, uh, basically, uh, accepting the secondary access, possible permanent access site as well for the, the Boy Scouts. So before you tonight, I'm here to say that we're just this close to bringing to council, um, a contract for the secondary access site, um, to get on the site and start with the geotechnical investigation uh, for the dam. So we don't have to wait twelve to eighteen months to do it with the road that needs to be built. Um, I will say with that, there's a lot of trees, um, that need to be removed to even do the geotechnical work. Um, the, the cost estimates, uh, for the three options, option one being a temporary access that would then be removed was about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The access, secondary access, making a permit was right around five hundred thousand dollars, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. And the, the geotech work to start with the preliminary, uh, access point was around two hundred and fifty thousand. So why don't you just give me an update on that? We're currently trying to get together those final numbers for a contract for city council. I would like to move forward with the secondary permanent access. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions for Kip? Thank you, Kip.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good job. Okay, counsel, that takes us to item four additions, deletions, and corrections to the agenda. Suzanne, or do we have anything?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. And the consent calendar, item five, we have three items. Approval, approval of the August twenty twenty four Statement of Expenditures and authorizing the mayor to sign warrants in payment thereof. Item B is approval of the August fifteenth, twenty twenty four City Council meeting minutes. And item C is the approval of the September fifth, twenty twenty four City Council meeting minutes. Any questions on any of them, or would you like to pull any of them off to consider individually?
Mayor, if I may, I just, uh, one amendment to the minutes was brought to my attention.
Please.
And it was the September fifth minutes, and I had a speaker under public, a public comment listed in two places. So I will make that amendment and correction.
All right. So the motion would need to contain that. Counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve this consent calendar with the amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve this consent calendar with the amendment to the September fifth meeting minutes.
My second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Suzanne?
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gier?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. That takes us to item six, public comment on items that is not, that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone, Sue?
We do. Our first speaker is Eric Lockman.
Eric, if you would just give us your full name and city of residence, please.
Hi, Eric Lockman, Woodland Park. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I want to bring it, bring to attention a concerning pattern I've observed on how decisions are made in our city. It often begins with a complaint that surfaces, prompting the council to act swiftly in an effort to resolve the issue. I commend the urgency. However, the process seems to get caught in a cycle while well intentioned may not serve our community as effectively as it should. After the initial complaint, notes are drafted and sent to legal counsel, who then produces an ordinance in contract form. This document typically emphasizes legal protections for the city, understandably so, but often overlooks the needs and voices of our residents as a whole. What follows is a first reading with little to no public discussion. Then during the second reading, this, the council frequently defers to legal counsel, relying on them for guidance on best practices. This raises an important question. Where do these best practices come from? Many originate from larger cities like Denver, Aurora, or Boulder. While they may have their merits, they are not necessarily suited for Woodland Park. We are a unique community with distinct needs and values. I urge you to consider the impact of these ordinances more thoughtfully. When campaigning to keep Woodland Park, Woodland Park, it's essential that we recognize that Denver's best practices are not our best practices. For a council member to not understand the need for a new ordinance during the first reading indicates to us on this side of the dais that more discussion should be had before pushing ordinances through. Please make, please take the time to consider our ordinances and reflect the spirit and desires of our community as a whole. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing a shift towards a more inclusive practices that prioritize the real needs of Woodland Park citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lacey Winter.
Lacey, if you would give us your full name and city of residence, please.
Lacey Winter, Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm with, um, CSCS, um, here at Woodland Park, and I'm the PTO president. And we're actually gonna have a chili cook-off coming up October fourth, and we want to personally invite all you guys to come. And so that's why I'm here. We're trying to reach out more to the community and be more involved. Um, I don't know if you know Melanie Abner or not, she's been here for a long time, but our hearts are just to be more involved with the community, and so this is just a step towards doing that. They're gonna pass it out to you guys.
I'll take them. Susan, get them for you. Thank you so much.
And then Mayor, there's no one else signed up for public comments, but we do have a lot of people signed up for public comments for item nine.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address counsel on items not on the agenda? All right. Thank you. Item seven is unfinished business, which we have none. Item eight is ordinances on initial posting. We have none. And that takes us to item nine, public hearing for item A, approval of ordinance number fourteen eighty-three, series twenty twenty-four, and ordinance amending Title Eight of the Woodland Park Municipal Code by adopting a new chapter eight point one-six regarding off-street parking and loading area maintenance. This is a legislative bias item. So I'm going to turn this over to the council, um, for discussion. And who would like to begin? Terry?
Yeah. I, I, I guess I'm gonna explain to the public that I will not be voting to, for this ordinance because it is not, um, at all what we asked for. Um, the language, it feels like there are too many opportunities for unintended consequences, um, harming small businesses in Woodland Park, and that's why I'm not gonna be voting for it. I'll be voting no.
Thank you.
And then, um, I echo Terry's sentiments. You know, the, the original discussion we were having, I think it's important for the public to understand is, um, you know, as we know, uh, there are large parking lot issues in our community. Safeway Parking Lot comes to mind. And the original intent, uh, when we were talking about this is, how do we address that? Unfortunately, the ordinance we got goes so far beyond that that there's, there's no way I could support this ordinance the way it's currently written. So I, I just felt like the community should understand kind of how we got here, what the original intent was. Uh, but the way this is written is, is not what we were looking for. And we certainly do not want to be, um, you know, a community that, that doesn't, uh, support or perceive to support, uh, businesses of all sizes. So, um, yeah, I just, I just wanted to kind of give that background and also let everyone know I'm definitely no.
Carol.
Um, well, first, I, I do want to thank legal counsel for preparing the ordinance based on, um, what they believe their original guidance was. Again, I, as written, um, I don't support the ordinance, nor did I really support the premise that, um, the city should have oversight over private property owners. Um, my way of dealing with, uh, uh, a pothole is that I don't go to that business. I mean, that, that's the reality of it. Um, but I, I, as a future discussion topic, um, understand that every time two or more council members ask for, um, a potential ordinance to be drafted, we do pay a retainer to our, uh, are not only a retainer, we pay an hourly fee to our, um, uh, legal counsel. Um, there was a period of time that, uh, in the past, it was not captured or codified. But if two, two council members wanted to, uh, initiate or introduce an ordinance, for whatever reason, always valid, I'm sure, um, we'd ask for a council consensus to pass that on to legal counsel. Uh, so we all understood what was, you know, whether we supported the initiative or not. We understood what was, what was gonna be written up and that it would incur a cost. And for future reference, I'd like to see us return to that practice. Uh, again, it's not codified, but I think it is good practice, and it does keep us from, um, as, as, uh, Councilman Gier has pointed out, perhaps not getting back the ordinance that those who wanted, uh, to see it on the table, uh, intended. Uh, but I, I am not going to support the ordinance as written tonight.
Thank you, Carol. George?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm, I've been on this since the beginning. Um, this to me has been, has been an overreach. Um, I agree with you, Carol. I was wondering, was there any, uh, procedural mechanism we could put in place where, you know, we get notified, um, as a council that, that two folks are looking to bring something? Um, I do think we're a little ordinance happy, uh, right now. And I'd like, I, I liked, uh, Mr. Lockman's, um, idea of just kind of slowing the roll a little bit. So I will be voting no.
Thank you, George. Steve?
Yes, ma'am.
Your turn.
Well, you know, I had spent a lot of time yesterday driving around and just looking. And for me to say yes to this ordinance would be not why I'm here. Because I'm here for the people, the small businesses, including, and all our small businesses. You look at their parking lots and why punish them because of, I want to say, the big three? That's just not fair to our community. So for me, I'm gonna vote no, and I'll be open and honest with it.
Thank you, Steve. Catherine?
Um, well, everybody else has said pretty much what I've, I've got to the same conclusion. So, yeah, I'm not planning to support this at all.
I'd kinda add one thing, though.
Please.
It, the, 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 uh, the concept of if you, if you don't want to deal with potholes, and let's just use the Safeway Parking Lot. Um, if you don't want to deal with potholes, then don't go to Safeway. Safeway's not gonna feel that, but all those small businesses in that center are gonna feel it. So that doesn't work. And there have, in fact, been multiple injuries in that parking lot. There have been financial damages to people's cars. We're all hurting right now. So I, I think the message, you know, we're not gonna pass this ordinance tonight, it doesn't sound like. But I think the message is to some of these large commercial retail parking lots and centers with parking lots is, please keep your property maintained for the safety and welfare of Woodland Park residents.
Thank you, Tara.
Yep.
First of all, I'd like to just make something very clear is that that shopping center, that strip is owned by a, a, a corporation that owns the strip. It's not owned by Safeway. Safeway is a less C. And the responsibility of the parking lot belongs with the owner of the strip, of the real estate, just to be clear. Um, and so, anyway, I, um, I have not been in support of this ordinance since this was a concept or an idea. So with that, I will be voting no. Steve?
Madam Mayor, may I say something?
No, but thank you for asking. Yes.
I think the best, good point. I think, uh, just in perspective and everything else, that, you know, the citizens, if we gave out the name, the names and phone numbers of those peoples that own the property and file complaints with them just to show them the force that our community has against any entity, regardless of how big they are. And that's what I would propose our community do.
Thank you. Um, so that's something else I wanted to say. Um, yes.
And while you think of what you have to say, council can consider putting that in their rules of procedure. The polit, the procedure you just talked about where two of you would bring the ordinance and they get consensus, that is something we can codify as an addendum to your rules of procedure. If you'd like to follow that process, you just need to let us know, and we can add it as an addendum to your rules and procedures. I was just looking through here and wanted to let you know that.
And I had made a note to bring that up with you all, um, to have our, to see if we have consensus to amend our policies and procedures, to have council give consensus before legal gets involved. So we'll take that up in a bit during reports if we can.
One additional comment, and that is, um, I don't think anybody on this council gave any input to the, the, our legal, our lawyers about what was going in the ordinance. I believe it was city staff, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Um, with that, um, counsel, anyone else have anything else they want to comment before I turn to the public hearing portion of this slide? All right. I just want to, to kind of summarize what you've heard on the dais this evening. I heard we have a seven zero vote to defeat this ordinance this evening. Although we haven't taken the vote yet, that is what I've heard. With that, I'm going to open the public comment portion of this public hearing and see if anyone that has signed up online or in the audience wishes to still address the council.
I'll just run through the names. The first speaker is Carl Anderson.
Carl, if you give us your name and city of residence, please.
Carl Anderson, and I reside in Divide. And, uh, Mayor Council, appreciate this opportunity, and I appreciate hearing how this is slaying. In the past week, uh, my wife and I have reached out to many businesses around town, let them know what was going on. And overwhelmingly, there was, you know, uh, support to defeat this. Um, I'll even say ironically, so my wife went to Mountain Naturals, and you know, Ms. Coloff owns that, Mountain Naturals there. She happens to be headed a, uh, Teller County Democratic Party. I happen to be headed a Teller County Republican Party, and we agreed that this is a bad idea. So we agree. If we agree that this is not the proper role of government, it must not be the proper role of government.
So, so I would say that that's a good start, wouldn't you, Carl?
What's that?
That's a good start to getting where we need to be, right?
Well, and, and that's, that's exactly right. And I, I think, and I appreciate, you know, we reached out to you guys. Smitty, I'm sorry you didn't get my email. I'll make sure you get future ones. Uh, but I appreciate the, the correspondence back and forth and the ability to discuss what possibly could have been, uh, bad ordinance for small businesses here in Woodland Park. So I appreciate the way you guys have turned this around, and thank you, city staff, for allowing us this process.
Thank you, Carl.
Debbie Miller?
Good evening. Debbie Miller, Woodland Park Chamber President. I wanted just very quickly say thank you for the opportunity. Um, we sent you a position paper yesterday. You promptly replied back to that. We had five bullet points in there that were very detailed. We represent not only small business but large business. And so it's important to look at both sides of that when you do that, and you've done that in your comments tonight. So I want to say thank you. Also, sitting through your budget work session, I sat there and very much did it hit the core of what each business goes through every year, looking at their budget. And this ordinance would have taken such a hit on people's budget. Um, so I'm very appreciative. You were very cognizant of your budget, where you're going, what you're gonna do. And I hope the fifth bullet point in which we sent you, we talked about seeking out alternative solutions. And those alternative solutions need to be palatable for all businesses, both small and large. And so hopefully you'll reach out to the business community. You'll talk to us as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Bill Page?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill Page. I'm a property owner here in Woodland Park, commercial property, Gold Hill Square, North and South. I built those. Uh, I currently own the part of the South project, uh, Gold Hill Square North. I have a number of tenants, at least two, and I have one particular tenant that I asked to come tonight. He was asking me to help in some, some functions that I were trying to do. And his name is Brian Nance. And he, uh, has, he's a wounded veteran, and he's permanently disabled. He was in a wheelchair for five years, and he's, he overcome those difficulties. And, uh, he and his wife have four children, and they're running a startup successful business. And, uh, I've watched him, he's right below my office. They collect donations and, uh, they take care of needy people that, uh, can't afford to go buy new clothes and so on. But I wanted him to explain some of the difficulty he's having, and I've seen it with trash. And it's not the property owners alone that are doing that. It's that some of it's general public, some of it's households that dump their stuff in the middle of the night. And I'd like to introduce Brian and have him explain.
Bill, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you guys. Um, this is the ordinance about the parking lots. And if there's something that's, that you have to share with us about trash issues or a problem like that, could I refer you to staff or to, it should have come up during public comment, not on the agenda. Does this have to do with the parking lot ordinance?
Yeah.
Can you help Mr., um, I forgot your last name already, Nancy?
The male's asking your comments. Does it have to do with the parking lot ordinance that we have? It does?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Nance?
Recommendations.
You may want to go to the microphone.
All right. Mr. Nance, are you ready?
I've got some recommendations how to solve it, and there needs to be some additional, um, legislation adopted to solve it.
Okay. Mr. Nance?
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I was asked to come here by Mr. Bill. Uh, we were having issues with locals as well as people passing through, uh, mostly campers dumping large amounts of trash in the, uh, trash can, and it's getting all over the parking lot, all over the back of the building. Uh, on Monday, I showed up around ten o'clock, and someone dumped a large amount of trash. It didn't even make it in the trash can, and the birds got into it and, uh, tore it apart.
Okay.
Basically, it, it made a big mess. Um, that's happened a few times.
All right. I think the staff has made note of your issues. Um, but what do you, what comments do you have for us with regards to the ordinance that we are about to vote on?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Sue's?
Did you have something else about the ordinance, Mr. Page?
Okay.
I, I support some enforcement trying to stop this dumping.
Mister, Mister Page, we're going to move on. The staff will, will address your issues with the trash. This is with regards to an ordinance that's, that's reference to the parking lots and the paving. And the maintenance of parking lots, not trash in the parking lot. So I have asked the staff to get with you all to address your issue with the trash.
You're asking the staff to get with me to cure further problems?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If they can help, yes. Thank you.
Okay, Wade Holder.
While he's coming up, I would just suggest on things that aren't related to the, what's on the agenda. We do have item six, public comment, not on the agenda, which would have been an appropriate place for the comments on the trash, just for future reference. Thank you so much.
Wade Holder, residents of Florin, Florissant, but I am a business owner in Woodland Park. I've been a business owner for more than 24 years. I'm a resident of over 30 years of Teller County. Um, guys, I am here to talk about the, this uh, the parking lot thing, but I believe in that. In the ordinance, there was some trash stuff that was listed um, in the shape. So maybe
My apologies.
He was trying to tie into that maybe.
Okay.
Cause I did see that in there. Um, I am also, I, I just came out of the thrive property management issue, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight is the Safeway comp. I mean, that's part of what got this going. Um, I was there for over four years. We had people that had, oh yeah, broken axles and all kinds of things, but it, it was not none of the business owners' issues. Thrive Management, guys, so if you guys want to know the numbers and their lawyers, trust me, I have all of them because we're in court right now together. Okay, um, they more than doubled CAM issues over the last four years, which means they doubled everything that was charged before Bill died, the guy that owned the, owned the complex for so many years. Um, but when the new management company came in, everything quit. That's the reason why it is Safeway Parking Lot, by the way, is nice. See, Safeway takes care of their own part of their lease, but both sides of Safeway are, are controlled by Thrive Management. Um, and so, yeah, I was here to talk about that, guys. Um. The city has enough tough time just taking care of their own potholes. I had people break axles in front of my store in the last year in potholes alone. Um, I only turn on about three city streets and all three city streets have potholes for me to get to work and for me to go home each day. So I'm glad, thank you, that you guys did not see uh, honoring this at all for, for small businesses. And I appreciate you guys looking into this further. If you guys want to know who to get, how to get ahold of Thrive, I have all their lawyers' numbers and their business address.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Appreciate you.
Thanks, you guys.
Stephanie Casada.
Well, Stephanie's coming up. I just want, I asked the attorney to check the ordinance and if, if, if there's a place for the comment on the trash. I will bring you back up before we're finished. Please, and thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, I am Stephanie Casada. I am a resident and business owner here in Woodland Park. Uh, I appreciate where you guys are at on this now. I crossed out a few things I was going to say, but I'm going to go ahead and say them anyway, just, just to keep it in the back of your mind as you're making decisions going forward. Um, I appreciate you giving us this opportunity to speak to you guys. Uh, requiring private businesses to maintain their parking lots to the standards of this was written in the ordinance, free of potholes. Uh, it's a burden that many businesses will not be, would not be able to bear. I appreciate that this action has been taken due to the public outcry of two large parking lots. Uh, that had major issues. And if anybody is on the uh, community, community pages, I'm sure you've seen for months, the public outcry. Um, but the public outcry did its work. City Market's parking lot has, is brand new. The one over by Safeway is in the process. So without this ordinance being in effect, um, rendering it unnecessary. Um, this ordinance will impact private businesses, places that people have options to patronize or not. Like Councilwoman Harvey had mentioned, and some, when I had posted this on the community page, somebody else said, well, I just don't go to businesses. If their parking lot's bad, I hope everybody that says I won't go to those businesses, let the business owners know because uh, money talks. Any smart business owner, when losing revenue, will seek to remedy the problem on their own and do not need the interference of the local government acting as the middleman. Let the natural consequences take their course. Um, picture this, it's the middle of winter, a concerted citizen calls the city to issue a complaint about a parking lot owned by a small business. And that time of year, filling potholes is like playing whack-a-mole. You will fill one and due to constantly changing weather conditions and snow removal, there is no way to keep up. So this hardworking business owner that already has many burdens to bear, especially in the slower, less lucrative months of the year. Now has to face the added cost of constant parking lot patchwork or be worried about pothole patrol showing up and facing a daily fine. And also, have you been downtown lately? I don't mean have you driven by. Have you walked around downtown? It is a sad state of affairs. So many empty buildings, many for sale or lease. And the for sale signs have only gotten larger as people have gotten more motivated to sell their buildings. Not a good look. There are many and ongoing projects that we would all like to see accomplished in our mountain town, including the pothole filled roads that are constantly in need of repair. How do these projects get done? By the taxes that the businesses in this town produce. I can't help but wonder if an inhospitable business environment is one factor in why we have so much commercial property available in Woodland Park. Ordinances like fourteen eighty-three are putting unnecessary burdens on our current business owners and probably deterring would be business owners from starting up here. My husband and I moved here two years ago. We love it. We want to live and die here. We have uh, many plans for businesses in the future. Um, but actions like this cause us to pause, if I'm being perfectly honest. Um, so let's work together to make Woodland Park a place that entrepreneurs are drawn to, not repelled from, by making it as easy as possible for them to thrive and not making their taxing jobs harder. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Excuse me, I just wanted to get back to you. There is a provision in item B at the beginning of the ordinance for off-street parking lots and loading areas to be maintained. And it does say that it is the responsibility of the owner to maintain a safe operating condition, free of potholes, accumulation of trash and other hazardous conditions, blah, blah. Um, so that is noted. Thank you. Do you have further comment, Mister Page?
Were you talking to me?
Yes. I was actually talking to your partner because your friend that's with you.
Anything else you wanted to say about the trash?
We need some help with city adopting. We need some help from city council adopting some additional ordinances that put tooth in enforcement and finding people and uh, putting a stop to this dumping that goes on in the middle of the night. And I saw uh, Mister Vance picking that trash up when I showed up that morning. There was trash all over the street and uh, you know, and he had left his place clean at night when he went home.
All right.
And the uh, it's, it's, it's gotta be a, make the community aware that we're not going to allow our city to be dumped in, in the middle of the night. And to stop whoever's doing it, stop it or they're going to get it socked to them with some kind of a fine or whatever the city sees best, but you gotta have some tooth and stopping it.
Yes, sir. I think our chief of police is at the back of the room. Suzanne, if you'd share with, he doesn't hear me. Our chief of police is at the back of the room. I think he's heard what you've said and we will take note of that.
The mayor said the chief is back there and he's hearing what you're saying and he'll help you out.
Thank you. All right, Suzanne, if we
Okay, and then the final speaker is Susan Schaefer.
Miss Schaefer, if you could just give us your name and town of residence, please.
Susan Schaefer, Woodland Park. I'll just sum it up by saying, just because you can, does not mean you should. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the council? Thank you so much. I'll close the public comment portion of this public hearing. And look to the council for further discussion or emotion. And I'd like to just give you a little, just for clarity. To help with this after hearing our conversation. The proper motion would be to approve the ordinance. A vote of no would be, cause the ordinance to fail. And a vote of yes would cause the ordinance to be approved. Are we clear? All right.
We are. And with that, I make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen eighty-three, series twenty twenty-four, as written.
Oh, I'll second it. Thank you. Any further discussion? Are you ready?
Yep.
All right, Suzanne.
Nakai?
No.
Baldwin?
No.
Gear?
No.
Harvey?
No.
Jones?
Nope.
Smith?
Nope.
Case?
No.
Thank you. Motion fails unanimously.
Thank you, council. We did a pretty good job on that one. All right. That is all the public hearings we have this evening. We have no new business in item ten. And that takes us to reports. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Uh, mayor's report. I have something I'd like to, well, I'll do events first. Uh, community events, September nineteenth through October third. We have two. On Saturday, September, September twenty-first. The U-Pass Cultural Center, starting at three P M, a Cowboys Legacy at the U-Pass Historical Society present a celebration of Western heritage. Featuring Western singers, storytellers, poets and actors, as well as historic building tours, artifacts and documentaries. On Thursday, October third, the Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a lunch and learn event focused on H R challenges. That's human resource challenges. Am I right, Debbie? From eleven thirty A M to one P M at the U-Pass Cultural Center, this event does require registration. So check out the chamber's website for more details. Are you going to share this?
You can.
You can.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I want to share something that I saw in the paper today that I got. Um, while I was still on staff, um, years ago, uh, Floyd Merlin Collop. He went by Lynn. He uh, was a, a resident here, and I just want to share a bit of his obituary with you all. Um, he was a family physician. He passed on August twenty-eighth in Loveland, Colorado. At the age of eighty-nine, he was a family physician and farmer in Norton, Kansas. A co-founder of Valley Hope Addiction Treatment and Recovery Centers. And here's the important part. Spearheaded efforts to build the Pike's Peak Regional Hospital in Woodland Park. He was a frequent visitor to City Hall because we have folks here working with him on that. Um, after retirement, Lynn and Joan, his wife, purchased a home in Woodland Park. Lynn soon recognized the value to the community and surrounding towns to provide hospital services. He led efforts to build Pike's Peak Regional Hospital. A private burial was held in Almina, Kansas. A memorial service in Norton will be held at a later date. Suggested memorials include Norton Regional Health Foundation, Norton Christian Church, or Valley Hope Foundations. Condolences may be sent to Joan Collett Pioneer House, four ninety, Mirasol Drive, Loveland, Colorado, eight oh five three seven. Anyway, he was a huge, um, he made a huge contribution to our community. He was a very nice man, and I just wanted to share with those of you that remember him that he did pass. That's all I have. Thank. Oh, no, we had a wonderful event this morning. Um, I have watched for twenty-three years since the Downtown Development Authority was formed. And we had a groundbreaking this morning to begin construction of Tava House. Huge day for our community, just huge. So it was wonderful. Um, congratulations to the community and congratulations to the developers for getting started. That's all I have. Catherine? I have nothing other than yay on Tava House.
I don't have anything really either, except that I'm trying to rack my brain about how we're ordinance happy. We passed an emergency gun ordinance because the citizens asked for it. We passed a noise ordinance. We passed a Verizon ordinance, which was required. And then two school, school ordinances came through, so I don't know, I don't want to tap in.
Thank you. Jeff?
Uh, Parks and Rec update. Um, Avenger Open Space Ribbon Cutting will be held on October fourteenth at two P M. Um, as we talked about in our uh, working session, Avenger Open Space has received eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars in donations, which is absolutely outstanding. Um, Parks and Rec is accepting late registration for third and fourth grade co-ed and fifth through eighth grade girls' basketball through September thirtieth. And lastly, Parks and Rec is recruiting basketball officials. Um, so if you would have a interest in officiating Parks and Rec basketball games, please reach out. Otherwise, that is all I have.
Thank you, Jeff. Carol?
Um, Chris and I, I'm hoping I'm not overstepping my boundaries, but tomorrow, the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee will be doing a cemetery cleanup. Um, very cognizant of, of um, the wishes of families who have those interned there, but uh, it, it's a good time of the year to, to accomplish that, and we'll be doing that around ten o'clock tomorrow morning.
Thank you. George?
Um, I'm, uh, Aaron, I'm going to have to defer to you on the D D A. Uh, I was not able to attend the meeting as it was moved. Um. But other than that, I would echo the Tava House groundbreaking today. It was fantastic to be out there. It was a, a ton of people, good, good amount of people showed up and it was, it was um, quite an event. So I'm looking forward to more of those. And hopefully that uh, that property continues to develop into their uh, continued phases and follow-on phases. So. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Smitty.
Yes.
But just to throw something out there, going off of uh, what, you know, councilman gear and uh, parking wreck, I was told when I was a young boy that every city is judged by the cleanliness and upkeep of its cemetery and its parks. And the way that we strive to keep and update our cemeteries and our parks is just one of those things that I like to see and feel proud about. But next to that, I was asked to hand out to businesses and to let this know. I have a flyer here. It says, uh, support teacher grants in rural Colorado. Give where you live, support teachers in your area, area of the state. Give what you want. You give to what you love. Support areas of education you are passionate about. If you'd like to know more about this, it's got a little Q R code you can scan or ask me for a copy and I'll get you one.
Thank you. City Attorney.
I think on behalf of City Attorney's Office.
Yeah.
Mister City Manager, Aaron Vassalotti.
Thank you. I will, I will give a brief update on the D D A. They talked about micro grants for the downtown, and they also discussed budget a little bit. So at our next meeting, we will be looking at the criteria for micro grants. And then also we will go over budget, where they're at currently, what their outstanding debts are. What the outstanding TIP agreements look like to give an overall picture of where the D D A is at, where it's going to go for twenty thirty-two. So that's, that's the topic of conversation for the next meeting.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have.
I have a question for the city manager. Um, a few months ago, we talked about signature events and developing a, a protocol for um, the temporary use permits for signature events. And I would hope that that'll be part of our budget discussion. Can you share with us how far along we are on that process?
We have, as, at a staff level, had several conversations about signature events and then also about the C U P process in general for event planning and event execution. In my mind, what my takeaway from our last meeting was that the council's desire was to continue to provide all of the traffic control and services that we have been, especially for the nonprofit events, but not financial payouts is that if you could all confirm if that's still the understanding. So, so that is the direction that we've taken to make sure that all of our events go off seamlessly and that they have excellent staff support.
Thank you. Thank you. I will leave this flyer up here on the dais. If any of you want to look at the, the uh, fundraising that uh, Smitty just spoke about. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.